So welcome our parents and school personnel attending our meeting on this very cold night, along with those who might be watching via the internet or YouTube, and thank you for your interest in our school system. We appreciate your attendance and your concern, and copies of our agenda are available in the foyer. At this time, we are at item seven on our agenda, which is recognitions, and I call on the superintendent. Good evening, everyone. This first piece comes from State Superintendent Truitt. Superintendent McLean, greetings from Department of Public Instruction. We are pleased to offer our congratulations to you and your entire district for the school's performance during the 2022-23 school year. In close, you will find growth award certificates earned by the hard work of your students, educators, and administrators. I have four schools I want to recognize this evening. The North Carolina Academic Growth Award goes to four schools that showed academic growth for the 22-23 school year. Wazeburg Elementary, Principal, you come forward? Oh, he's not here. He, that rascal, and I'm gonna tell it on him. Does anyone know where he is? He's at a football game. He received tickets to see San Francisco and Detroit Lions. He emailed me, "Mr. McLean, I got a lifetime offer, and I can't turn it down." He said, "Can I please, please go?" I said, "What you got going on? We have a board meeting Monday night." He said, "I got San Francisco tickets and Detroit Lions." I said, "Go, I'll cover for you." So he's not here this evening, but for a good cause. His school is recognized for achieving the goal of exceeding academic progress for students during the 2022-23 school year. How about giving Mr. Kevin Adams a round of applause? The next school I want to recognize, Peachton-Pocna Elementary, the North Carolina Academic Growth Award, Mr. Dr. Stegall, you come forward, please. Thank you, sir, for your hard work and your service. Pleased to congratulate your staff. How about giving Dr. Stegall a round of applause? The next school I want to recognize for exceeding academic growth award, Asa County Early College, Ms. Decker, she's not here tonight. She has a ceremony event at Early College that she couldn't get out of. So let's please recognize Ms. Decker for exceeding academic growth for Early College. How about giving her a round of applause? The next school I want to recognize, I don't see her either, but she didn't tell me, she's here? Left. North Carolina Academic Growth Award goes to Lysville Elementary. Ms. Flake, please come forward. Congratulations, ma'am. Please tell your staff, we are proud of you and your staff and the hard work. And this principal, I didn't get word, maybe she's on her way, North Carolina Academic Growth Award for Morven Elementary, Dr. Pratt, is she here? I'm not sure. Maybe she'll be here momentarily. How about giving these five principals another one round of applause for their hard work? Many, many months ago, I made, I spoke to the Anson Women's League, and I made a promise that I would get the Board of Directors Women's League and all of the international teachers in the same room, because at that time, all the international teachers hadn't gotten here yet. So when I spoke to the Anson Women's League, I promised that one day in the near future, I would get all the national teachers and the Anson Women's League in the same room. Tonight is the night. I don't have any certificates. I don't have any awards. We're just gonna take pictures and give out hugs for what the Anson Women's League did for the international teachers. Before we do that, I want to turn it over to our chairperson, Chairman, Mr. George Truman, for a few words on our behalf of Anson County School Board.
Before we begin, I want to also thank the Anson Women's League for all you did for our international teachers, helping us get them in here, helping us accommodate them, helping us get them settled in. You did a wonderful job, and we certainly appreciate it. To our international teachers on behalf of the Board of Education and citizens of Anson County, I want to formally welcome you, our international teachers, to Anson County and Anson County Schools. These are fully licensed, experienced teachers who have chosen to broaden their professional backgrounds by staying in our county for three to five years. In this exchange, they learn from us, and we learn from them. As principal of this school, it was central school in the 90s, I had nine international teachers on my staff, and that one can attest to it. Also, as superintendent of Anson County Schools, in the beginning of this decade, I'm not gonna give any years, we also employed visiting international teachers, and they added a lot to our school system. We thank you to our international teachers for choosing to come to Anson County, and we hope you learn as much from us as we'll learn from you. Thank you.
As I stated, we have no certificates or no awards to give. All we're gonna give are hugs and pictures. Are there any other board members that can say anything? I know some others that have given maybe some anonymous donations, or perhaps giving some Christmas gifts to schools without us knowing about it. So do I need to call names? Or you want to say a few words, or you want me to go away and go with the ceremony? Okay, I'm gonna call you out? Anybody? Anybody?
Good evening. I'd just like to say that I'm happy to see my fellow AWL members here today, and again, welcome to our international teachers. And I was a part of helping to give, and I appreciate what, I'm a new, kind of still a new member, but I'll tell you, each time I go to the meetings and I see what they do for the community, it is awesome. And the soup is coming up, the soup lunch is coming up. Ben? Number 13, make sure you get your soup. Get a ticket. Ann can tell you how to get it.
So now, will all the interna-, I keep saying interna-, will all the teachers come up, along with the national women that come up? Can we try to get a picture of everyone together? We're gonna try to face that back. And again, we want to thank you guys, what you've done for us, what you've done for the staff, for the teachers. Don't be shy, come on up. There you go. There about an?
Again, we are going to item eight on the public comment, but prior to going there, I want to again thank everyone for coming out tonight. We're glad you were able to join us. You're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the agenda, but if this is a good time to slip out, if you need to go somewhere, thank you again. We're again at item number eight, public comment. Public, Anson County Schools Board of Education welcomes comments from our parents, students, and community. The public comment period is open for members of the public to voice complaints, concerns, or issues, complaints about public matters of public concern, the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the educational program or school facilities, and/or other matters. Each person is granted up to three minutes for his or her presentation. This part of the meeting is for the board to hear matters of interest or concern from the public. However, obscene or vulgar statements, personal attacks, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. As per board practice, the board will not address or respond to public comment, except for clarification, until the superintendent has an opportunity to investigate the presented issues, and/or the board reviews the issue with legal counsel if warranted. We did not have anybody to sign up tonight for public comment. Well, at this time, we go to the chair's report, which is item nine on the agenda. And I have nothing for open session tonight. Do any of my colleagues wish to make a statement?
I'd just like to say that I did attend the spelling bee this year. It was really nice. That's a terrible word to use, but we didn't have just three rounds. I think we had 10 rounds, and it was awesome. And a fourth grader from Lysville won. It did me good to see that. So I'm very proud of all the students, but especially enjoyed the spelling bee this year.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Anyone else?
I'd like to say I did attend some Martha Luther King events, and the parade was magnificent. And I would want to comment, Dr. Ratliff, you did an outstanding, I mean, an outstanding job at Lockhart Taylor Building. I was so proud of you. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Okay, so we'll move to item 10, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Truman. We just finished up our first semester, and I want to give the board an update on how we did on our EOCs and our secondary schools. So Ms. Wallace, our testing coordinator, if you would come forward and give us just an update on how our secondary schools did on our EOCs our first semester. And board members, I always like to give you a true picture on where we are with our testing data. So we have some bright spots that we want, that we want to celebrate, and also we have some areas that we need to improve upon.
Good evening. You have a handout coming around. I'm gonna give you just a real quick update on how our high school students did on their fall EOCs that they took the week before we got out for Christmas, and then a, just kind of an overview of some other things we're doing related to testing right now. On this handout, you've got our scores for each of the EOC classes. The Fall '23 is the ones that we did in December, and then I've got the scores for last fall and last spring, and then the whole combined scores for '22-23. And then I also put on there how we did before the pandemic in 2018-19, which was the last year that everything was normal before COVID. So in English II, we showed some significant growth. Our proficiency rate for English II in the fall of this year was 55%. Last fall, they were 24% proficient, and then in the spring of last year, they were 15% proficient. They were 29% before COVID. So that 55% this year shows quite a bit of, quite a bit of growth, which we're really proud of that. In Math I, this fall, they were 11% proficient. The scores have been gradually rising in Math I over the last couple of years. Before COVID, they were at 13%, and now they're at 11%. So they're almost back to where they were. Those folks out there at the high school are working hard to get the, get those math scores, Math I scores on up, because we realize that, you know, even though they were 13% before COVID, that's still not where they need to be. Yes. This is just, right, this is just for Anson High School, and the reason for that is because they're on a semester schedule, and the early college is on a year-long schedule, so they won't take their EOCs until May. Yes, sir.
I have a question. So the data that we're comparing against the '18-19, did that include early college data?
No, that's just a high school.
Just high school to high school?
Just Anson High School, right. All of these scores are just Anson High School. In Math III, this fall, they were at 20% proficient, which is higher than it was before the pandemic, but it's a little bit lower than it was on last year's EOCs. They were at 39% proficient last, last year. We'll still have the spring scores, and then probably some summer scores that go into the, all of these percentages. So these won't be the final scores for the year, but it's, it's one of the parts that will go into that, those final scores. In Biology, in December, they were 11% proficient. Last fall, they were at 2%. So that's a big difference from, you know, from that. In the spring, they were 25% proficient, and then last year's overall percentage was 23%. Before the pandemic, 31% of those biology students were proficient. So we're still doing some recovery in Biology, and we're not, we're still not quite where we are. Those folks out at the high school are working hard on, on all of these subjects too, and doing some, lots of intervention, and a lot, lot of planning, and trying to get, trying to get our students proficiency on up, on up there. Do you have any other questions about these EOC scores?
Have these scores been presented to the state yet?
They, well, the state has these scores. They, it's online testing, so it just automatically goes in there, and so they, they have these scores.
I'd just like to say that that 55% is awesome in English II. So to all the teachers at the high school, administration, kudos to you for that, because that's awesome.
It is awesome. Also, in testing right now, for the next, next few weeks, our English learner students will be taking the access test. The access for ELLs is a test that measures English proficiency for those students in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. The Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, requires that all states test their English learners once a year in, in those four areas, and the access is what North Carolina uses for, for that test. We're also doing check-ins, the NC check-ins. Students in grades three through eight, and our year-long high school EOC class students are getting ready to take their second NC check-in of the year. And then those students in high school biology just took their first one for the spring, and the students in the other spring EOC classes are gonna take theirs later on in February. NC check-ins are formative assessments, which means they're used to help, to help guide instruction. The teachers and the instructional coaches and the principals and the administrators use these, the check-in data to help them with planning for instruction, so that they, so that they will have an idea of what students have already mastered and what they still need to learn. Have you any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
Thank you.
Ms. Carle, you come forward. We have been monitoring these results, and we have been meeting with Chris and his team on a regular basis, and all the instructional coaches in the district, and central office, and also Chris's instructional team. We met with Chris, I think, this week, and we have put together a plan, and we're working diligently trying to get these scores even better, especially Biology, Math I, and Math III. So Ms. Carle, please share with the board what strategies we're using trying to put together a continuous plan of improvement.
So this past summer, we worked hard, and last school year, to adopt the math program. So we're still in early phases of adoption, as well as securing a math coach in Ms. Veronica Smith, who has historically good data and turnaround scores for schools with poverty. And we also have Ms. Nicole Stegall that's working at the high school to provide teacher support. And so that was the first layer of the support framework that we put into place. The second piece is, we met this summer to talk about unit planning and pacing, and to discuss the need for a standard courses study-aligned curriculum. And so in that meeting for English Language Arts, we decided to pilot a program to see how, what kind of impact, because we know research says that, you know, if kids have standards-aligned instruction from a strong teacher, that we can get upwards to 80% or higher on our proficiency score. So just one semester in, with the hard work of the teachers, and Ms. Stegall, and administration of the high school, they were able to make a significant leap, and we hope to see that continue to climb. And we know that if we stay on the course we are on, that it will. So we met, and we talked about the biology and the math scores, and of course, we want those to increase as well. We currently have a State Department coach that is working with biology at Anson High School, along with Mr. Stinson. We have met and talked about going to a co-teaching platform through NCVPS, North Carolina Virtual Public High School, where it's not all students online, it's a blended model, where the teacher is collaborating with another teacher that has that vetted, standards-aligned curriculum, hoping that we can see the same jump. Mr. Stinson and I also have been talking about that for Math I, and he's moving forward with that, and again, with the purpose of we can take our toolkit here in Anson County, our strong coaching, and some rigorous coursework to see if we can close some of these gaps. I will say that they're very committed to the process, and I'm really proud of his team. He has some other things that we're working on. We do have a meeting tomorrow looking at graduation rate, credit recovery options for students, things of that nature. We don't have middle-of-the-year data in quite yet for our elementary, middle schools. They just are finishing up their reading assessment for the little ones across the district. And once we have that, we will refine our district plans for that, because we can compare how, what kind of growth we're getting from beginning of the year to middle of the year. But we have used our initial data and our data from our coaching visits, from district coaching, as well as relay coaching, and our professional development from our external vendors through our reading and math program. Based on that, we have some schools that were given additional days of one-on-one coaching. Example of that would be at an elementary school where their instructional coach is having to teach in the absence of a staff member for maternity leave. So we know that if that coach is pulled out, that the district has to coach, but they also, the teachers probably need somebody to provide more one-on-one support. We talk to the principals in those situations, and those principals, we've teamed those discussions, and they've gone very well. We put in place our early literacy specialist. It's a state-paid-for position, but the two schools that that position serves is Morven Elementary School and Wazeburg Primary School. The goal of that is to help, we have kids that are coming in that aren't quite ready academically, with just having like print basics, like how to hold a book, how to turn a page. And so we know that we have to really, really serve their needs, and help the teachers to get students to close their gaps. So that's another focus. The district is spending more time in weekly planning sessions at schools that show a greater need. We have one school that their academic coach started coaching after Christmas. So we've facilitated visits where we took that coach to Lysville Elementary, because they have a great weekly planning meeting in place, and so that that coach could see it in action, as well as modeling for that coach. So we have a very detailed plan. Again, we'll continue to adjust it, but within that work, my staff and I, we make sure that we have feedback from where we visit the schools, of action steps, of things that, you know, we want the team with that principal to accomplish on the next visit. So an example, that might be helping the teachers to know to, what to prepare to come to their planning meetings. You know, that's a part of a teacher's everyday job is to really internalize their curriculum. Again, just focusing the most on the most needed schools, but providing support all the way around. The biggest thing that we can do to push instruction is, number one, believe in our students and all that they can do. Our job is hard, but if we do that, and we have solid standards-aligned instruction, we'll see gains.
Dr. Truman, you asked the question, does the State Department know our results? Yes, they do, because we work hand-in-hand with the Department of Public Instruction. We have been signed as CARIS team, so every strategy that we use, they're, they endorse it, and we work hand-in-hand with our signed CARIS team. So our strategy that we use here in the district, they are well aware, and they endorse our strategies that we're using. So they are, they're keeping their eyes on Anson County, and they are hand-to-hand with us on our strategies, and they are saying that we are on a trajectory of going upward with what we're doing here in Anson County. Are there any questions for Ms. Carle?
Yes, I have one. I have for the board, please share with Ms. Stegall and Mr. Stinson, the, the work that they've done in English II is phenomenal. I think you have a model that works, and we just hope that we can continue moving in that direction.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. Carle.
Thank you.
Next up, I would like Dr. McLaren to come and talk with us about the EPI contract. Hey, Dr. McLaren, it's getting late in the evening, and the dance stars don't come in the phone tonight, does it, Ms. Gibson? Okay, so we're good.
Yes, sir. Mr. McLean, with your approval, I'd like to call Mr. Long from EPI to come up with me.
Sure. Dr. Long?
Tonight, in your packet under new business, you've got a contract between Anson County Schools and Educational Partners International. Educational Partners International is a company that's one of the biggest across the state of North Carolina. You'll find them in a majority of school districts. This is a different recruitment tool. Last summer, we came to you with a contract that was recruiting teachers off of H-1B visas, which are work visas, and as you recruit teachers off of work visas, they are assigned to Anson County Schools. They can't go to other districts. They can't go back without approval. Everything goes through that, because we're the sponsor. A lot of districts will actually use multiple companies just to increase the size of potential candidate pool. You know, one of the reasons for this is if we don't use them, it doesn't cost us anything. Within the allotment, the way it's converted, this is a really good financial opportunity for us to be able to go out and recruit teachers from over fifty different countries across the entire world, be able to go out and, for lack of a better way to say it, we get to go recruit the best teachers from everywhere we can recruit them from. As we look at recruiting teachers, we know what the challenges are. Over the past month, one of the ways we've been recruiting teachers is to establish partnerships with every HBCU in North Carolina, South Carolina, and even getting into Virginia with Virginia State. We've recruited teachers that we knew were going through programs within the state of North Carolina, and they were on student teaching in this current semester. We actually hired them in Anson County ahead of the curve, so that we could get them under contracts, especially in subjects like math and science and are harder-to-fill positions. Recruiting teachers on J-1 visas, and you can track this back all the way to the 1960s when they started cultural visas, and education kind of found a way to take advantage of this and to use it for their benefit. For a lot of us in the older generation, we remember it as VIF, which is actually now Participate Learning. EPI is one of the strongest companies that helps districts in recruiting teachers. So, as we go to this, we want to make sure, I know when I first came in, one of Mr. McLaren's commitments was that, as superintendent, he wanted to have a certified, competent, well-trained teacher in every single classroom in Anson County Schools. He felt that every child deserved that, and when you read the Leandro decision, you understand that every single child has that as a constitutional right as well. So, what you've got within that contract, and we wanted to be transparent with the board, transparent with our community, and asking Mr. Long to come forward, to be able to present to our board, so that I'm not the middleman, that you're getting it firsthand, that you're able to ask any questions that you want to ask. If you've got any concerns, you're able to put those forward, too. Also, we have another option, and talking to legal advisement, if the board has any questions or concerns, we can also pass a contract where it's not a simple yes-no vote, whereas a yes pending legal review, which would mean it wasn't approved until the board attorney approved it, making sure that every concern that the board had or everything that the board wanted in that contract was in there before we actually officially approved it. What it does is let us go ahead and start the work of recruiting teachers. As you hear from Mr. Long, most of the teachers that are recruited on J-1 visas are usually gone by the end of April, first of May, before we even know when most of our teachers are either retiring or moving to other places, before we know that true attrition rate. And right now, most districts are about a third of the way into this process. So, that's one of the reasons we wanted to go ahead and bring it before the board tonight. So, this time, I'm going to introduce Mr. David Long, who is with Educational Partners International. He'll be able to fill you in the basics of this, why this is such a good opportunity for Anson County Schools, why it's also kind of a no-lose situation. If we don't use it, it doesn't cost us anything. If we use it, it doesn't cost us in addition the way that H-1B visas cost. From talking to other counties, some of the bigger counties actually are able to add, because of the difference in cost, they're able to actually go out and add more teaching allotments because of what they save in using this as a recruiting tool. One district I talked to, one of my mentors in HR, they actually funded twenty-eight additional teaching spots based on the savings that they got by using this. So, this time, I'm going to introduce Mr. Long. He's here, he will give you the overview of the contract and of the services offered. He'll also be available for any questions that you have. So, Mr. Long, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Well, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity of being able to answer your questions. My elevator speech basically is this. EPI, Educational Partners International, we recruit, we vet, we place, and we support K-11 classroom teachers, and we place them here in North Carolina. Our main office is located in North Carolina, but we work with a total currently of five different states. As Josh was saying, this is, basically, it's cost-neutral. And the reason for that is that an international teacher on a J visa is not eligible to participate in state retirement, because they're here on a temporary visa. In addition to that, they're not eligible to participate in the state health insurance that's provided through North Carolina. And the reason for that is it's not comprehensive enough to satisfy the requirements that the U.S. Department of State has set about for the J-1 visa participants. Actually, the J-1 visa was started back in the 50s for young professionals, and the idea at that time was that the State Department said, well, we want to bring in young professionals. We don't want them to replace positions where we have our talent locally, but we want them, put them in positions where they can't find people that are suitable for those positions for a temporary period of time. Give them a good experience, let them go back home and tell the rest of the world, hey, they're not as bad as what everyone says they are. So, it's really a public relations move from the State Department that started years ago, and it has morphed into one of the primary avenues for bringing in international teachers. It's, we can do all subject areas with the exception of speech and language, because an international teacher is not able to meet those licensing requirements. And we are only allowed to place teachers who meet that licensing requirement in the area or areas under which they've been employed or being employed. When a teacher comes in, you are the employer, as EPI is the visa sponsor. And so, we are responsible, from that standpoint, for the teacher being here, and we try to make it as seamless as possible to bring them into the classroom and to see that you have a good experience and they have a good experience, and they're meeting your instructional expectations. So, I'm going to pause and catch my breath and see if perhaps there may be some questions concerning what we do or how we do it. Dr. Truman?
Just give us a few or a brief update on how you go about recruiting a teacher, for instance, a math teacher. How do you go about recruiting a teacher and vetting that teacher to assume that it would be a good fit for us?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Very good question. Let's take mathematics. Well, first of all, we recruit in about fifty-five countries. We begin by really vetting a transcript and having that vetted. North Carolina has identified several national companies that will do a credential, what's called a credential evaluation on international, on transcripts from other countries. And once that transcript is vetted through that process, we know from that process that if the teacher can meet our other standards, that they could qualify to teach in, in this case, North Carolina. We also do a criminal background check on them, and that criminal background check goes back five years. So, if the teacher has moved around from country to country, we require background checks in every place of residence where they have been over the last five years. We also will vet them for their cultural, we try to determine whether or not they're going to make that cultural transition, leaving their own culture and coming here, because with some of the teachers, that's a big stumbling block for them, and we want them to be able to handle that transition. So, we're looking at that as well. Most of, incidentally, most of, you're required to have a minimum of two years of teaching experience. However, most of our teachers, and I looked at it this past year, it's right at eight years, a little more than eight years of teaching experience. So, you get a wide range of individuals. We have them with bachelor's degrees up to PhDs. We also require, as part of the vetting process, recommendations from their immediate administrative supervisors, and we track those down and verify that it's accurate. We also will interview them through our office, and there are several, there's about three different touchpoints that we have with the teachers as we take them through a screening process. So, over that period of time, they have to go over all three of those hurdles before they are considered as candidates for placement. Once they're considered as a candidate, then we're able to make those teachers available to the school districts that we partner with, and we use a Zoom platform and set up interviews. We facilitate the interviews, so that your administrative team or whoever you designate to interview the candidates and make decisions on behalf of the district can have an opportunity to screen them as well. So, once they have passed through that screening process, and once the district has decided, yes, this math teacher would probably fit well at school X, then we handle the process going forward and help the teacher obtain their visa, help the teacher with their transition to the United States. We give them a $3,000 interest-free loan. We give them a cell phone, we give them a computer. We meet them at the airport, well, actually, we help them with their airline ticket, too. We meet them at the airport, we bring them in for some additional in-country orientation, and then we deliver them to the school district. At our end, we have a department that's devoted to helping the teachers when they come in and providing support for them. We will provide for them, to our best of our knowledge, housing accommodations that would be available in this area. We also will, they have an opportunity to purchase a car. We network with a car company that can handle selling cars to international teachers who don't have a social security number. That's a big stumbling block, because anyone that comes into the United States, you have to wait ten days before you can apply for a social security number. So, it takes a special process in order for teachers to be able to handle things such as cars and car insurance within that period of time prior to receiving their social security number. It's probably more than you asked about.
No, but that's right on target. How do applicants get in your candidate pool?
Well, the applicants, through our recruiting, they will submit interest to us, and we ask some basic questions. We don't ask for everything all upfront, because we know, for example, that they have to be currently teaching and have a minimum of two years of experience. That's kind of like jacks are better to open, I guess you'd say. And so, once we're able to determine that, then we circle back with them with asking for some additional information. Now, there are certain countries where the State Department will not allow the teachers coming from those countries to qualify for a J-1 visa. So, we can't recruit in every country, but we're fairly comprehensive in fifty-five.
What is your profile for someone who you think will or will not adapt our culture?
Well, a lot of it deals with a discussion with that individual on their perception of expectations. We also look at their family situation. A lot of our teachers will bring in dependents. If they are married and they have two children under age twenty-one, that can work. If they have three, and especially if they're a single parent with three children, financially, that doesn't work in North Carolina. So, there's a variety of filters that we use to ascertain whether or not we feel that teacher could be successful. We'll also discuss with them very candidly what they can expect. For example, if a teacher's coming from Jamaica, well, at times, I've walked into classrooms in Jamaica, instruction stops, the students stand, they face you and say, welcome to the class of today we are studying, and then they wait for you to thank them and ask them to be seated and continue. Same experience in going in classrooms in China, although we currently do not recruit from China, but it's a cultural expectation that they have in their own culture, and we're very candid with them upfront. Your American students are not going to stand and greet you when you come in the door like that.
I had an art teacher from Jamaica, and she spoke proper English, and it was an adaptation for her to be able to understand us.
Yeah.
Oh, what kind of lead time do you mean? I mean, let's say we lose a math teacher and we need a math teacher. How much lead time do you need?
We have to, all the teachers, we receive it a lot bit every year from the U.S. Department of State for J-1 visas, and once those visas are obligated, we're no longer able to place teachers that next school year. Part of our agreement with the State Department is that we will place teachers prior to the opening of school. So, any requests that come in where we do not have sufficient time to process, to get the visa processed and details handled for that teacher to arrive, then we wouldn't be able to meet that deadline, you know? And if, for example, I noticed you had a number of teachers from the Philippines that were here in attendance. If you're a teacher from the Philippines, it might take you up to two months before you're able to get a visa interview. And the reason for that is you first have to resign from your school. That has to be approved by a local educational group, then it has to be approved regionally, and it works its way on up the chain. That process takes a month at least. The teacher has to go through that process, so they're in good standing when they go back home. If they don't, they're going to have problems getting a job when they go back home. So, they'll go through that process. After they go through that process, then they have to go and make an appointment with the U.S. Embassy or consulate for a visa interview. And it just depends on the schedule at the consulate as to how quickly that can be accommodated. So, teachers from Jamaica, it's a much faster turnaround. Teachers coming from, say, the Philippines, it's going to take several months, you know? And right now, we started placing teachers in January. We offer job fairs to our districts, and basically, if you all were, you know, reached a degree, you were going to... And basically, if, if you all were, you know, reached, agreed, you were going to do it, what I'd say is, well, Josh, what, what, what do you, what subject areas do you want to look at? And if it's math, okay, high school, middle school or both, okay. Then we go through our database and we'd look at those that are eligible to teach math at the designated level or levels, line them up for interviews and, and ray, arrive at a date that would work with the school district for those interviews. We line them up at 20-minute intervals and probably from nine o'clock in the morning till noon because on an international clock, that works with time zones around the world. And so you're interviewing about nine teachers in that subject area in that period of time. We record the interviews. We send this to the district, the recordings. And then it's up to the district, if they want to have a follow-up interview, that we can certainly arrange that. Most of the districts say, well, we want, we think this teacher A, B, and C will work out well in our district. We like to offer them a position. Sometimes it's a school-specific position. Sometimes knowing that you're going to have seven math vacancies in the district for any given year, you want to hire at least three international teachers for a position at a school yet to be identified. It may be just a district offer. It just kind of depends on the school system and, and how they want to approach it.
How, how easily or how difficult is it to acquire like biology teachers or chemistry teachers where there are very few candidates available for those jobs?
Well, it kind of depends on how quickly you ask for them. You can imagine that, 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 the, the pain on finding teachers for specific areas is, is felt across this na- nationally. It, it's not reserved to North Carolina or to any one county. So, you know, your math teachers are going out the door first, your science teachers when you get into specialty areas. If you have a, a need for what I call a one-off, like welding or something like that, we have those candidates, but we don't take them through all the steps. We have to, because, you know, once in a while we'll get a request for it. You know, I had a request for a teacher in electronics, say. And so we went back to that teacher and said, okay, you still have to do your criminal background check. And, you know, there's a couple of other hurdles you have to pass. But we know enough about the individual to know that in all probability, they'd qualify. So we'd move forward with that.
Are you audited by DPI?
Sir?
Are you audited by DPI?
We are audited by the State Department every year. You know, we, we, they, they come in and go through our books. You know, they want to see that we're doing exactly, and we're, actually, we're 100% compliant. And so it's, think of it like a a, a special education payback audit.
Those are always fun.
Yeah, I used to be a special ed director, so I know.
Any of my colleagues have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Davis.
How many districts are you currently working with in North Carolina?
Quite a few. I don't know the exact number. I'd say about 25, 30, something like that.
And, and in overviewing the, or looking over the contract, it looks like we have to contract with you for a certain number.
No.
It, well, we pay for a certain number and we tell you how many we, we want.
Yeah.
According to the contract.
We'd like to interview elementary at K-2. And we might be interested in three.
So my question is of the districts that you're working with, let's say they ask for 10 specific slots. They have 10, how many of them are you filling 100%?
Depends on when you're asking for them and how many visas we have left. Yeah, that's a, that's a variable. I mean, we try to accommodate your requests as best that we can.
You, you say in here and, and the overview that they are not eligible for state health benefits, but that you all provide health benefits for them.
Yes.
Are you making that specific for each area that they are located it, located in? So that, you know, I like, I know that some health insurances don't work well in this area. They don't have coverages here, or do you all just work with one group policy?
We have one group policy.
It says, it says that you all pay for the health insurance.
Well, it's, it's a co-pay. We take care of the lion's share of it and the teachers pay a percentage of it as well.
Do they, do we withhold that from their, their paycheck or will they just send you a check for it?
How's that work? That's a good question. Never had that question before. It just works. Okay.
And that's just.
No, you don't, you don't withhold it. No, it comes out of the teacher's account. The teachers have a, when they come into the country, we give them that $3,000 interest-free loan. They have an, an account already at Truist. And we work with Truist for all of our teachers. And so they sign a, a withdrawal agreement every month. Comes out of their account to cover their co-pay on their insurance.
But you're, in this contract, it says that that $3,000 relocation loan, that we have to collect that money.
No, that's different. Yes. The relocation loan, the teacher also signs this agreement that gives the district permission to deduct on, uh, over the course of their first year, the, the $3,000 in equal installment, which is basically $300 a month. And then you, you would refund that to EPI.
Okay, so you're giving them two loans then? A $3,000 loan to pay for their health insurance and a $3,000 relocation loan?
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm sorry. I wasn't clear on that. Let me see if I can find another way of stating that. When they come into the country, we give them in their account $3,000. That they can use for a down payment on an apartment or just some sticks of furniture or whatever they want to use it for. As far as their health insurance goes, that's a co-pay basis. And so we are paying the majority of that premium for that teacher and the teacher is then paying their share of it. And for that share of it, it comes out of their checking account. So you're not collecting anything with the health insurance.
Question to Dr. McClellan. If we acquire a new teacher that needs to relocate here, are we still providing them with some, a loan and we take it out of their check?
Yes, sir. Currently, we've got a new teacher loan that is available to any new teacher when they come into the district. And then we take that back most of the time.
Well, could you repeat that? My hearing aid decided to talk in over you while you were talking.
Yes, sir. We do a relocation loan for teachers, uh, beginning teachers in our district are able to come in and they can apply for it. They don't have to, they can. But this is for any new teacher within the district. It's an option.
So this is virtually the same thing?
Similar, but we do a lot smaller amount.
And, and that's why I was going to ask, what, what dollar amount are we offering?
I think we've done a thousand.
Okay. Dr. Truman, I, I've, I've got a few more questions. Is that okay? Okay. So I see on here, it says that if we go into this agreement, that we would pay an annual administrative fee.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that that fee that I saw on the back? So it runs about $75,000 over the course of five years for an educator? So if, if we hire one person through your organization, then the first year, I think it's like 16,000.
16,750.
And then it.
Second year it drops, the third year it drops. And then if, in the fourth and fifth year, it's the same amount as in the third.
So it runs about 75, so we're looking at about $75,000 per educator?
Yes, for five years.
Yeah. Once in a blue moon, there's some freak thing where a teacher can come in mid-year. And if they do, the administrative fee for that is just that $10,000. That doesn't tie into the other. Right, yeah. I've, I've taken issue with how that's written in that statement. It's, it's not clear. Thank you for catching that again.
To a thousand. We can give them a thousand.
Are you paying for the health care or is it coming out of their check?
The health, their co-pay comes out of their paycheck that goes, a direct deposit that goes into their checking account from you all.
Okay, when I'm talking about.
That's a chunk of change to come out every month is what you're saying.
Okay, yeah, but when I'm talking about co-pay myself, and believe me, I know what a co-pay is. I've got plenty of them. That's your, your additional payment to the doctor in addition to insurance. And you're saying co-pay, is that their premium or is that?
That's premium.
Okay, now. And what does health insurance normally run for, for an employee and any family members? You've got a $3,000 long-term loan insurance coming out. Are these teachers going to be making enough money to repay all this stuff?
Yeah, I mean, we have teachers that do it all the time. It's tight, I'll be honest with you. North Carolina is, pays next to nothing compared to other states. So, yeah, it's tight. It's very difficult, especially if it's an A3 teacher coming in. Teacher has two years' experience, is on an A3. That's, that's tough.
Okay.
They're not going to make it with multiple dependents.
Where do most of your teachers come from? What, do they come from the Philippines, Jamaica?
Most of our teachers are coming from the Philippines and Jamaica at the present.
Okay, so what we're looking at here, if we have a teacher comes in, they stay here five years, we're going to pay you $75,750 in addition to their premium, I mean, I mean, their salary and the insurance, whatever.
Now, the teacher is not paying that fee to us, the, the administrative fee.
We're paying it to you.
Yes.
We're paying it.
Yes.
So, so I'm looking at, uh, right now, I don't, I forgot what the previous contract is. But we're paying a lot of money just for somebody to look at, well, paying you, and this is not personal, I'm just observing. If we bring in 10 teachers, 11, 12, 11 teachers, we're looking at a million dollars in five years just for those teachers to be here. Not, not including, I mean, accounting what? We pay them salary. Have we done any research on where that money's coming from over a period of five years, 10 years? I can, do, do we have that kind of funds in Anderson County? That we can take on right now? We've got how many, uh, international teachers, we'll say, here in Andy County? Dr. McClellan?
What actually happens is you will put the teacher, most of your teachers go into state-paid slots. You will draw down the conversion dollars to pay those teachers, the salary. This year, the conversion was 77,000 and change per teacher. In other words, the average teacher in North Carolina costs 77,000 and a couple hundred or $200, something like that. You draw that money down. You have that and your finance officer can then, you know, and what Josh was saying earlier, some of the districts gain positions because what they're doing is they hire 15 international teachers. They put them in state-paid slots. They draw down the conversion dollars. And they don't have to convert all 15 slots for those 15 international teachers. They may only convert 13 of those slots. So they have 15 teachers for the cost of, of 13. And they still have two state slots that they can use. So basically, they're getting 17 teachers. And so it, it, it's not costing the district anything more than, than a locally hired teacher because you look at your cost of benefits and what you contribute to your, your retirement and to your health insurance for each employee. It, it more than offsets the expenses that you would have to cover our administrative fee that we have to charge.
I think Ms. Doc, Ms. Turner, what he's saying is we draw down money from the state. It pays for their health insurance and all of these other extras. Well, we don't have to spend that money. And this is where the money he's talking about coming from sits in our account. And that's what accumulates over time and makes this a cost-neutral expenditure.
Yeah, so we pay nothing on them as far as, as insurance. We don't, we have to have workers' comp. Have to have unemployment insurance, don't we?
We're saving the insurance and the state retirement, basically. But we got to pay everything else because we got to pay workers' comp. Because what happens if one falls out?
You look at the rate of insurance, I mean, retirement, because that money stays in our account. And you look at the cost of benefits, because that money stays in our account. And that's what accumulates to offset this.
But to, to that point, Dr. Truman, and, and I hear what you're saying. And so I can see where you're saying it's cost-neutral. But the issue is, is after five years, we don't retain that intellectual property of that person any longer. So that person now has to leave us and we start the process over again. And so although we, we may be cost-neutral of filling a spot for five years, if, and because in the language in their contract, if we fall in love with this person and we want them because they've done phenomenal work with us, we're not allowed to talk with them. Because in the contract, it says that we have to let them go for at least a year before we can talk with them. And so although I, I hear what you're saying, where, where we're investing in, in people now, we're investing for longevity or that return, you know? Not to make it a business thing, but we are, it's a return on investment that we're looking for. And although we have bodies and seats with, with these, I just hate that we're, we're providing opportunities and then we're having to, it's going to be a constant cycle of starting it over.
And I think you're right. But again, we go back to, this is not our only recruiting effort. We're going out after local teachers and we're going out after people who can fill those long-term. This is to fill in the gaps. And so we can plug a gap for a period of time. But the J, the visa issue is the federal state department. I mean, we don't have any choice over that. After so many years, immigration law says they go. Well, and I, I hear, Ms. Davis, exactly what you're saying. And, and I, you know, yes, you're, you're 100% right. One of the things you may want to take in consideration when you're considering this proposal is what, how long do you actually hold on to a locally hired teacher that's been hired, let's say, in the last five years? Is that teacher still with you? How many of those, what percentage is it? Yeah, across the state, you sponsor somebody on an H1B visa, that gives you five years with that teacher. And after that, they start looking around and they see that Virginia's, they can make, you know, like $8,000 to $10,000 more a year. And so it, it's very hard to hold on to teachers at this day and age. But if you're having success holding on to them, then this may not be the program that you want to consider. Now, there is a, a question about some other deductions. A teacher coming in, if the teacher has not worked in the United States in the last six years, the teacher and this district do not pay into FICA for the first two calendar years. So there's some additional savings there. But after they've passed the two calendar year mark, which is, ends up being January of the second year, then FICA kicks in. But up to that point, because of how they're classified with the federal government, they would, there is no contributions being made on either side.
Question.
Yes, sir.
You indicated earlier that you work in multiple of units in North Carolina. And, and you indicated possibly up to 25. Are any of our neighbors who would like to have our teachers, are they offering supplements to these teachers or is that a possibility?
They qualify for the same type of supplement that you offer to a locally hired teacher. So if you have, let's say, a $2,000 or some districts, they offer $10,000 to a math teacher for signing bonus. The international teacher receives the same amount.
So they can outbid us on. So they can outbid us on high, on hard-to-fill positions?
Uh, not with us. If you say, I want to set up a, a, a job fair for math teachers, we hold those math teachers for forty-eight hours for you to consider after you've interviewed them. They don't go out for any other interviews. We don't shop teachers around. I mean, if, if you, this is the group that you have under consideration. Now, after the forty-eight hour period, there's others that want to have interviews too, okay, but we don't allow our teachers to shop around.
But, but from what I'm understanding though, and Dr. Truman, in their contract, it shows that whatever supplemental bonuses, um, that we give to our current teachers, we give those same exact bonuses to, um, uh, teachers hired through this, or, or I guess through this program, but I, I, I'm not certain I'm clear on this, so. It, under the terms of the, of the agreement, we come to you with a number of positions that we're looking for. At that time, do we pay for those positions or only upon hiring?
Not unless you hire somebody.
So we could enter into a contract and never pay you guys anything?
You don't hire anybody, we don't, you know, that's it. And you can interview math, science, elementary ed, K-2, 3, 5, uh, family consumer science, whatever you wanted to interview, and you select nobody, that's fine.
Like, I'm, I'm trying to formulate the question because I don't want to sound rude, but then why would we enter into a contract if we don't know that we're gonna use you or not?
Well, because if the terms of the contract aren't in agreement upfront, they're not gonna be in agreement after the fact.
But I guess I don't understand then-
These are gonna be the guidelines, these are gonna be the rules, this is how we're gonna play if we do business with you.
Yeah. And if you don't do business, no harm, no foul. I mean, that's it. Yeah, no, if, if, if we don't have a contract, we can't set up interviews, so that's-
I think what you mean, Ms. Skip, Ms., uh, Ms. Davis, is approving the contract, there's no mon, there's no monetary changes, there's no money change hands only if we call him and use his services. There's no fee involved until we call them and utilize them.
Unless you hire somebody, there is no fee involved.
If we hire somebody, that is the fee schedule that will follow, but we recuperate those fees through our FICA and through our retirement and through the things we don't pay them.
Right, that's correct. No, it's, it's their, it's their phone, we're providing them. They, everybody at this day and age comes with a cell phone, you know, and some of them- No, it's not. You're absolutely right, it's not free. But we are able to provide them with a phone, and we can get them then set up with a service, and whether or not they want to continue that is up to the teacher. And if the teacher doesn't want to continue it, or if they don't want to accept the phone, they don't have to take it. It's the same way with a computer. We would give them a computer, but if they don't want it, they prefer the one they brought with them, that's fine. And sometimes the school systems, a lot of the school systems give them computers in this day and age too. So sometimes they have their computer, they have the computer we give them, that one of the school systems has given them.
And Dr. McLaurin, this would be more of a question for you or, or Mr. McLean. In the contract, it states that we have to provide a buddy or a mentor, a local mentor. They provide a mentor that I think comes out of the administrative fee. We have to provide a mentor. Who pays for that person?
Depending on the way it works, we usually set every teacher up with a mentor the first year anyway. I would have to look at the fee structure to give you an accurate, because I, I know certain ones, one year is paid, and I believe the second year is not paid, so I'll have to go back and check that.
Okay, well, in, um, four point three, it says that we have to give them at least a day that it, that we are paying for them just to arrange for their housing and transportation. Do we do that for all our employees?
Pay for housing and transportation?
Hey.
We're reading at the bottom, it says minimum of one paid day for classroom observation or other non-teaching professional development. We actually did multiple days with our teachers that came in through global recruitment. We had a plan of when the teachers came in, how they acclimated to schools. They spent a certain amount of time where they came in, they got their computer, they got all their passwords, their logins. Then they worked with an instructional coach, they got brought up to speed on all the programs we used, they met with their principal and went through all the policies, procedures, particularly for Anson County schools, specific to Anson County schools, and that was actually over several days. Actually, that's been a really good process.
And following up on that question, we have someone that moves here, uh, and they need housing. They may or not be able to find housing right away, and so you're gonna need to have some flexibility, some, some opportunity for them to look for housing, and I think that's what that's saying, isn't it?
We provide, for every county where, at a school system where we have teachers, they receive a community packet from us. In that packet is information that you would normally need if you were to move into a community. You know, where's Walmart? Where's the hospital? What about the, the, the range of medical services? What type of housing is available? Who do I contact when trying to research housing in this area? So there, there's a lot of that that goes on. Plus, the reality of it is, there's a whole network of international teachers, as you've already seen here tonight. And they're, they're more than willing to help incoming international teachers, uh, address those things and to help them with the transition because they've all been through it.
Another question, technology compatibility. If I'm coming from the Philippines and I have a computer that I purchased in the Philippines, what kind of issues do we have having it be compatible with our platform?
Well, that's why we're giving the teachers their own computer.
And the ones that you give them are compatible with our platform?
Basically, they're Chromebooks. You use Chromebooks, I'm sure, yeah.
Dr. McLaurin, I found that on page four. It says, um, "The school agrees to provide every initial-term educator with paid time during normal business hours, not to exceed one day during which the educator is allowed to arrange housing, transportation, et cetera."
If people need help with housing, we support everybody. Do we say, here's a free day to go do it? No, but we, we will do everything we can to help them.
Question is, does a regular employee get a paid day to look for housing? That's the statement in here, that's what I'm interpreting.
No, sir. Is that something within the contract, Mr. Gosman? Is that something within the contract?
Any other questions from the board members?
See, there's another side to this too, you might take in consideration. There's a chart of accounts that your finance officer has that gives a complete listing of allowable expansion, expenses, expenditures for, uh, your money that is drawn down, uh, in, with the conversion dollars. With the money that you save, and you will save money, there, you can buy equipment, you can pay for professional development, you can pay for substitute teachers, it, it just goes on and on. I mean, it's, it's a big list. So when you're, you're looking at the total picture, you know, if, if, you know, it's not gonna cost you anything, and because, and it's not teacher-specific. So if you have a teacher that's an A8, and you have somebody with a master's degree with fifteen years, that person with a master's degree is costing you more, yes, and the A8 is costing you less than that, but the dollars that you draw down are not teacher-specific. So, uh, you'll just find overall that you're gonna come out ahead in the whole thing, but, you know, I, I would suggest if, if, if there's areas of the contract that are not of, of satisfactory that you let folks know, let the attorneys talk about it and see where it lands. I mean, that's fine.
My, my last question is, so once we enter into this contract and we hire one person, then we are, we are obligated to this contract for at least a five-year period. So that means, well, we are because we've said we're gonna keep that person with us for five years.
If you do, yeah.
Right, so if we hire someone, then we're obligated to this contract, even if it's just one person for five years. So if we had a change of heart, if we had a change of leadership, if we had any changes, that person would still be bound. We, we would be because we've had one person hired, so we'd be bound to this for at least five years.
No, ma'am. It's, it, although the intent, when we recruit a teacher, we ask them for an intent of a minimum of three years. With the understanding that, that it can be extended for two additional years under certain, uh, under certain conditions. Let's say that you hire just one K-2, K-2 teacher. And let's say next year, your K-2 enrollment drops drastically, and you've lost that position. If you don't have a position for the teacher, we'll put the teacher in another district. It's a, you, you just have to give us notification that you're not renewing the teacher.
And then there's no fees beyond that time?
Sir? Oh.
Again, just to, for clarification, if after one year, the teacher decides they want to go home, that, they're not really cut out for this, and they leave, and we no longer have any teachers hired under this contract, are there any additional costs to the school?
On page, George, I might excuse you, George, on page fourteen, gives you a prorated schedule of refunds, and, uh, it's, you know, it's pretty clear.
That's assuming they're gonna stay the full five years. What he just said was, should they leave, anytime during that contract period, we don't owe you anything else.
Right, that's correct. The prorated is, is if something happens, the teacher's here, and they are really the primary caregiver for their parents back home, and somebody all of a sudden comes down with Alzheimer's, and they have to go home and take care of them, okay? Then, and, and they, they, they have to resign.
Yeah, but this-
Mid-year, there's a prorated agreement there.
Yeah, but this, this is an annual, this is an annual factor. I mean, it starts over every year, the prorating.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just, yeah, okay.
And, and do you have any issue with us looking at the wording of this contract and making sure it states just that, that should this employee leave, there's no further expenditure expected of Anson County schools?
Yeah, that's the way it works, if you don't put it in there, it's fine. And any changes that you want to make, and we've been back and forth with, uh, who is the attorney?
Uh, Alice from Schwartz and Shaw.
Okay, and, and our attorney and, uh, our legal department has gone back and forth, and we, you know, made some adjustments based upon some preliminary discussion. We're fine with making adjustments as long as all the attorneys can agree. We have to be mindful of what is required by the Department of State, and that's what drives our train. That's why we have the contract the way it is, so.
And can we modify it to say up to eight days because the employee may not need the full eight days?
Uh, however you want to word it, it just, it's really up to the attorneys as to, if everybody can live with it more than anything else, yeah.
We, we certainly appreciate you being here and answering our questions. You don't realize you were the guinea pig. You're the first person we've been able to talk to, to find out this information about. And so obviously, we had a lot of questions because we as a board have never done this before, but, um, we appreciate the time you've given us and the information you've given us, and that's my signal, I'm supposed to be taking pills right now, so thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity, and I'll continue to stay in touch as, as time and questions dictate. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Any, any further you may to cover?
Okay, thank you, Dr. McLaurin. Dr. Truman, that completes my superintendent's report for tonight, thank you. All right, at this time, we're at item twelve, action items. On the action items, we have A-01 Personnel Report. Administration recommends approval of the personnel report. A-02 Budget Amendments. Administration recommends the approval of budget amendments as presented. A-03, the twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar. Administration recommends approval of the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five school calendar as presented. And A-04, the twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting dates. Administration recommends approval of the proposed twenty-four, twenty-five board meeting dates. At this time, can I have a motion to approve the consent items? We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh, Dr. Truman, I would like a little time to set this calendar, I haven't any time to do it, but, uh-
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear you.
Just give me a couple of sec, minutes, just give me a little bit of time on this calendar.
We have some questions on the calendar. All right, having no further discussion, all in favor of approving the consent items, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye, opposed, same sign. The motion carries, and the consent items are approved. We're showing no old business, and so we go to new business, and the first item of new business is C-01, the 2024 Legislative Committee Service. The North Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors invites each local school board to nominate one of its members to serve on the NCSBA Legislative Committee. This individual should be nominated through a vote of the full board, taken in open session and submitted by March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. At this time, I'd like to nominate Dr. Bobby Little as our Legislative Service Committee Representative. We have a unanimous second. At this time, all in favor, please signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. Dr. Little, congratulations, it is time for you to speak. Thank you for your willingness to take on this responsibility. And, and again, thank you for your willingness to do this. Uh, we have A, C-02 Educational Partners International Agreement. Administration recommends approving the Educational Partners International Agreement as presented. Um, at this time, I'll take a motion to approve that. Uh, we have a motion to table, is there a second? We have a motion to table and a second, uh- All in favor of tabling the discussion, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign. What we would like to know, though, is what are your concerns that need to be written into the contract? So, if the board members would share with Dr. McLaurin what your concerns are that need to be put into the contract so that we can move forward. At this time, we're at item 13, calendar items. Are there any questions or requests for clarification of the calendar items listed? Hearing none, we move to item 14. And having no further action before the board, do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.